County Council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So staff will be pulling Agenda Item 1A from your board's agenda so that your board may proceed with you as the chair in light of Vice Chair, in light of Chair Crandall's absence to the remaining items, which starts with the call to order.
Okay, thank you. The county council is pulling Item 1A on the agenda. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call the regular meeting of February 11th to order at 9:01 a.m. Do any of the board members have a moment of silence? I do have one, but before I proceed, I wanted to check in. No? So this morning, I'm asking the board and the public to join in a moment of silence for Eric Parsh Sr., who passed away peacefully while surrounded by family this past week. Eric is survived by many family members and friends in the community. Eric served a 30-plus-year career with the California Highway Patrol, with 17 of those years protecting the people of Lake County. During that career, he put his life on the line and was shot and wounded in the line of duty back in 1995. He went on to finish his career retiring in 1999. After he retired, he was an active volunteer with the Lakeport Christian Center, helping with many projects in the community. So with that, I ask for a moment of silence. If you'd stand with me, please. Chief Sepeda, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Consideration of any extra items not appearing on the agenda, are there any, Johanna? There are no extra items for consideration. And moving on to approval of the consent agenda, I will state that we have, we will be pulling and withdrawing Item 5.9, and then we are going to pull for further discussion today Items 5.8, 5.10, and 5.12. Are there any other items from supervisors that are not covered there? Hearing none, those items will be pulled, and we can move on to approval-
Mr. Chair?
-of the consent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, your board may want to consider if any members of the public may want to pull any other items from the consent agenda.
Thank you for that. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any of those items or request any further items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we can move on to approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, and 512.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our timed items, our 9:02 item, public input. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak today? Yes, please approach. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development. I'd just like to take a moment to announce the opening of the public review period for the proposed fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas in the cities of Clear Lake, Lakeport, and Lake County jurisdictions. The maps, the proposed maps can be found at the website, ready.lakcountyc.gov. The links for the, for your comments, depending on if you're commenting on any one jurisdiction, can be found, or email comments should be sent for Clear Lake to info@clearlake.ca.us. For City of Lakeport comments, please direct them to admininfo. That's admininfo with no dot in between, just admininfo@cityoflakeport.com. And for the County of Lake, please direct your email comments to resourceplanning@lakecountyca.gov. Or you can contact me directly at 707-263-2382. This public comment period is for 90 days in order to gather all input for the update of the fire severity maps, which are quite significant in the amendments that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak today? Are there any members on Zoom? No. Hearing none in the chamber and none on Zoom, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Our next item, 903 item, is the pet of the week. We have our animal control staff here.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Officer Joel Saldana with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today, we have Angie. She is about three years old, weighing in 56 pounds. Angie has been with us since January. Angie is very energetic, loves everyone and everything that comes in her path. Angie would do best in a home who loves outdoors where she can go on long walks and enjoy nature. If you aren't interested in Angie, please come down and see her at 4949 Hellbush Drive or call 263-0278. Let's help Angie find a forever home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding the pet of the week? Thank you for being here, Animal Control. We will move on to our 904 item, new and noteworthy at the library, and we have our librarian, Mr. Veatch on Zoom.
Hello.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. As your board proclaimed last week, this month is Black History Month, and I want to highlight Black historian Blair L.M. Kelly's work of history, Black Folk: The Roots of the Black Working Class. Blair L.M. Kelly, Ph.D., is an award-winning author, historian, and scholar of the African-American experience. She is currently the Director of the Center for the Study of the American South. Black Folk won the 2024 Robert F. Kennedy Human Rights Book Award and Philip Taft Labor History Award. Spanning 200 years from one of Kelly's earliest-known ancestors to today, Black Folk highlights the lives of the porters, maids, and postal workers who established the Black working class as a force in the late 19th and early 20th century. As reported in The Times Weekly, "Remember how totally dry your high school history books were? Yeah, this is nothing like those. Black Folk lets readers get to know people who lived a century ago or more. It's like being carefully handed a living, breathing story to hold." In using her own family tree as a launching point, author Blair L.M. Kelly lends details to tales she's heard all her life and knows well. Alongside that, Kelly uses her experience as a historian to show how her ancestors represent most of the Black working class between roughly 1865 and 1940, and how their journeys were like so many others. Black Folk is available in print and ebook through the library system. You can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems. Requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. We also have other authors and books on display at our branches for Black History Month, so stop by and check it out. I also want to highlight our Zipbook service. If the book you want isn't owned by the Lake County Library, you can request it through Zipbooks. Zipbooks is powered by a California State Library grant. Your requested item will be ordered by the library and shipped directly to your address. The book is checked out to you, and once you read and return it to the library, it becomes part of the collection for others to enjoy. You can make our Zipbooks requests at our website or by visiting your local branch. This February, we are also hosting a literacy tutor training on Saturday, the 22nd, at Lakeport Library. Volunteer literacy tutors are a cornerstone of our adult literacy program, which matches tutors with adult learners who need help with their literacy skills. No experience is needed, and ongoing support is provided. Call 707-263-7633 to register for this free training. And you can find information about this and more on our website at library.lakcountyc.gov or come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, Upper Lake, or on the bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
Thank you for all of that information this morning, Christopher. Any comment from the board before? Any member of the public wish to comment on today's presentation about the library? Hearing none. Anything on Zoom, Johanna? No comment, no, no members of the public on Zoom? Thank you again, Christopher. We appreciate the detailed information.
Thank you, Christopher.
Moving on to our 6.4 item, that staff is requesting that this item be pulled for further research before being brought back at a later time. Does the board wish to weigh in on any of that? No. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item being pulled for further research at a later meeting? What was that, Johanna?
No hands in Zoom.
No hands in Zoom, and seeing none in the, in the chamber, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Do we need a motion on this, Mr. Guintivano? To remove?
Since it's not a public hearing, the, no.
No? Okay. So we'll move on to our 915 item, which is public hearing, consideration of a revised County of Lake ambulance ordinance.
You have to wait until-
What was that?
It's not 9:15.
Oh, 9:15, I'm sorry. We have two minutes. I'm not sure that we have an item we can handle in two minutes. Okay, well, we'll handle our 7.4 item. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments: Animal Control Advisory Board, Big Valley Advisory Council, East Region Town Hall, Emergency Medical Care Council, and Kelseyville Cemetery District. Any discussion from the board before we open that to public and bring it back?
Just starting with the animal control seat. Beverly Hill served before, and I'm happy to reappoint her.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to speak on behalf of, well, not speak on, but thinking on our chair that is currently not here, Supervisor Chair Crandall. I know Jim Burton has been a longstanding member of Earth. I can assume that he would approve should we continue it until Chair Crandall is here to approve that application, or should we move forward today?
Yes, that's a good point. I have not heard anything from Chair Crandall prior to this meeting. I would, based on that, assume that he'd be comfortable with that appointment, but at the same time, it may be wise to wait for him to return. Any further on the board on that?
No, I agree. I concur with that, that we should wait for-
Okay. So we have a discussion on that. Before we continue forward, is there any members of the public that wish to comment on any of these appointments for consideration?
Donna.
Okay. We'll start with Zoom. Donna, we'll go ahead and give you the time to speak. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name.
Donna Mackowitz. I am a registered voter and supervisor District 3, and I'd like to mention that there has been an additional application for the Earth Board, and I'd like that to be considered. It was Lori Correa, and I support Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Owens' suggestion that we postpone it until Supervisor Crandall can return. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of, anybody else on Zoom, Johanna? Anybody in the chamber? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I believe we have consensus to, what's that? Go ahead, Supervisor.
It's just for information. I was looking at the dates. It looks like it's the first Monday or first Wednesday of the month, so we have time to bring it back before a meeting is impacted by that.
Okay. So I believe there's consensus to remove and pen the consideration of the East Region Town Hall. So with that, does the board want to proceed with motions?
I move that we appoint Beverly Hill to Animal Control District 5 seat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair, if I may, your board may want, just for the record, also take in any negative votes or nays essentially as part of the motion process, motion call process.
Okay. So-
Any nays? Against?
You had a unanimous already.
We had unanimous on animal control?
Yeah, we had a unanimous.
Yeah, but you just say any nays.
There was, the motion was unanimous, no nays on animal control? So with the, I believe Supervisor Vice Chair is going to move forward.
I move that we appoint Mark Lips for the Big Valley Advisory Council, District 4.
And I'll second that.
Second.
Second from Supervisor Sabatier? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with unanimous vote. Moving on to Emergency Care, Medical Care Council.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Christina Wilson to the EMCC as the setter alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Kelseyville Cemetery District.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Paul Law and Roth to Kelseyville Cemetery Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. And I believe that concludes Item 7.4. It's now 9:18, so we can return to our 915 item, which is public hearing, consideration of revised County of Lake ambulance ordinance and ordinance amending article. Somebody help me with that.
Four, or nine?
Nine.
Article nine, Chapter nine of the Lake County Code pertaining to permitting an operation of medical transportation services, continued from December 17, 2024. And we have our Health Services staff, Mr. Eichelman, here to present.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Dean Eichelman. If you can hear me. My name is Dean Eichelman, and I'm the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for Health Services. And thank you for the opportunity to present this agenda item to you today. On behalf of our Health Services Director, Anthony Arton, we are seeking your support in approving a revised ambulance ordinance, which was last updated in 2004. This ordinance addresses permitting for public and private provider ambulances, establishes the permit processes, permitting standards and regulations. the permit processes, permitting standards and regulations to follow, and defines interfacility transfers as well as Priority One transfers from our base hospitals for patients needing higher levels of care outside of the county. Lake County Emergency Medical Care Committee has reviewed this ordinance and has voted to move this forward for your consideration today. I would be happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eichelmann. Before we open it up to the public, I see Supervisor Pyska, you have the floor.
I have a question about the fees. They're not explicitly laid out in this ordinance, and then I followed up with Director Arton. Also, I don't think that they're in our master fee schedule, too. So I was just wondering where those are and what you can add.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So you're correct, they are not currently in the master fee schedule for the county, and those are something that I believe our department would need to bring to you to get those adopted into our master fee schedule. So unfortunately, no, that is not in our current ordinance. It's not in the, it's not in the old ordinance either. It's stated the same way.
So what are the fees, then?
There, there is no fee set right now at this time. That's something that we'd have to bring back.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I believe CAO Carter might have a comment.
CAO.
Assistant.
A CAO, sorry. Acting CAO.
On regards to that, we do an annual master fee update in May, and we have already been in contact with the department. The fee will be part of the study and put in the May update to take effect July one.
Have there been no fees?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have an idea what the recommendation will be on fees?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to comment on that. That's something that our department will review and come back to with.
Okay.
There'll be a study done.
And I think that it's the right order of operations. This is a very antiquated, old version of an ambulance ordinance that really needed to be revised. There's multiple reasons why it needed to be revised. That was one of the reasons, but without getting the approval today, there was no need necessary to work on what we were doing. This also stems from, granted, it doesn't solve the problem, but this stems from some of the problems we were enduring of outside-of-county ambulance coming into the county. This really separates public and private. This also hopefully will help out with some of the IFT problems that we've been enduring for decades here. And what this does also, which is one of the, kind of the line in the sand that we were not willing to cross, was to protect our nine-one-one system for our local agencies to make sure that they kept control over that and that it did not eventually go into the control of some of the private ambulances that come into the county. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It's taken quite a long time. I feel that this has already led to some of those changes to our IFTs, as we're seeing hospitals looking at contracting with ambulances specifically for that process, for their patients. And so I think that we're seeing some progress here, and this is one of the big pieces to the puzzle, to make sure that we have oversight of those ambulances that come into our area. There were some public comments that were provided, and I can't specify all of the comments, but I know there was some concerns about us glossing over some of the mandates on our public agencies. Those public agencies already have the mandates through state law. They already have to go through their process to make sure that their rigs are permitted and allowed for use. So there's no need to replicate state law into our local agency ordinance. What we did was just add the specifics to the private ambulances that would get permitted to do the work here in the county. I know there was also some comments about some of the people that were involved. We have the North Coast EMS. They are a vital part of the operation for our LMSA here in Lake County. They definitely had a review process. There was quite a number of folks from Sutter, from Adventist, from fire districts, from public health, and others that were involved. And I know there was a mention of conflict of interest, but the doctor specific from North Coast EMS is not a member of the EMCC, and this was voted on by the EMCC to be brought to the Board of Supervisors. So I do not believe that there is any conflict in the process that has occurred in order to bring this final document to us. So I just want to at least speak on behalf of some of the comments that I received.
Any other Supervisor comments? CAO?
So I did get confirmation, the previous fees were a hundred and fifty dollars per permit, so it should be around the same amount this next time.
Thank you for that. Hearing no other Supervisor comments, I will comment. I'm comfortable moving the ordinance forward with knowing that the fees will be reviewed when the county does a master fee schedule study, and that will come back, and we'll be able to see that. I know there's been a lot of work done on this with, through the Emergency Medical Care Committee, the Fire Chiefs Association, and others, and it's something that I think we need to move forward. So hearing none, no other Supervisor comments, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public in the chamber. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Chief Cepeda, you'll have three minutes.
So I thank you again. As Bruno was saying, that ambulance ordinance goes back to the early eighties, revised about nineteen eighty-eight, again in nineteen ninety-seven, and then again in two thousand and four. So on March twenty-second, two thousand and four, two fifteen in the afternoon, the local provider pulled out of the county. They called the fire chief, said, "We're deceasing, deceasing operations," and the fire chiefs got together, and March twenty-second will be our twenty-first year of doing this. So the old document was convoluted because we had to either, the county had to sort through issuing a permit, or what the fire chief did is we wrote mutual aid agreements to them, allowing them in there. Since this document, it does split the hairs, it allows autonomy for the IFT program, which we totally support. We do and are involved in the Priority Ones, where we downstaff a nine-one car for those life-and-lim type of situations. But it gives them some autonomy to do what they need to do to fulfill those interfacility transfers. The document, I would say we have several, two, three, four hundred hours into it over the last two years, but it does provide and segregate that public-private sector. We are exempt from Title thirteen. Our inspections, our personnel, our ASC certified mechanics, every day there's a pre-inspection, pre-trip on the equipment that we operate. Work very closely with public health and all different assets. At one point in time, we operated about twenty-four nine-one fire-based EMS ambulances. We're down to about eighteen now. We are the only county in the state of California that's predominantly fire-based. The last private provider we had, which is where the fee scale kind of come into, is there wasn't any providers, and they were in here on mutual aid, whether it be Falk, AMR, the different ones. Right now, Adventist does have a contract with the Ukiah Valley Fire Authority. Chief Doug Hutchinson was the chief at Lakeport. He's the chief over there now, and they're fulfilling those. And I think that probably eats up my three minutes, but thank you for your time. And Bruno, thank you for all your support. Dean, all your support. The chief and everybody that spent a lot of grueling hours, coffee and donuts, to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other members of the public in the chamber? Seeing none, Johanna, do we have any hands in Zoom? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revised county of Lake ambulance ordinance and ordinance amending Article nine of Chapter nine of the Lake County Code pertaining to permitting an operation of medical transportation services.
I second that.
If I may, as part of that motion, your board may want to consider to be read in title only, and just, I understand Supervisor Sabatier already pretty much read it in title, but upon approval of that motion, the clerk can then read the title of the ordinance.
I move to approve the ordinance, read in title only.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody opposed? And call for a vote? Or, I'm sorry, where?
Upgraded.
Oh, okay. So it's an ordinance amending Article nine of Chapter nine of the Lake County Code pertaining to permitting an operation of medical transportation, uh, transportation services.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I make a motion to move the second reading of the ordinance to the following meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nobody opposed?
And just for clarification, Mr. Chair, if I may, that next meeting would be February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Our next item is?
Thanks, Dean.
What's that?
Said, "Thanks, Dean."
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. It's nine-thirty, so we're not going to be able to do our ten a.m. timed item yet. What's that? Seven point two or three?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and take up item seven point two, consideration of appointment of District One Planning Commissioner, brought forward by Supervisor Owen.
Do I make, do we discuss, or do I make a motion?
I think it's open for board discussion at this point, if there are any comments. The board has the item at this point before we open it up.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I guess I feel the need to bring up the public comments that we've received regarding Ms. Rosenthal. She has, it's been made public, signed on to a letter specifically regarding the cannabis industry. My personal opinion is everyone has the right to have their personal opinion, and the job of a planning commissioner allows you to still maintain those personal opinions, but be able to follow the rules and regulations of what a planning commissioner is required to do, which is looking at our zoning ordinance and our municipal code as to whether or not projects fit within the code that exists. So I have no problems moving forward today, if that is the will of Supervisor Owen.
Any further comment from the board? Board members before we open to the public?
Um, I mean, yeah, I got the public comments, too, and I think, I think the letter raises some questions, that she's critical of our ordinance, but the role of the planning commissioner is to uphold the ordinance the way that it's written, and so I think, you know, that is going to be her responsibility.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I have no doubt that she'll do a good job. She's been in this position before. She's held the planning position, and so during our interviews, I, we felt that she had a lot of experience in the planning portion, which is what we're going through right now for the districts, and as well as the area plan for the entire county. So I think she will be strong, and I, she has assured me that she's not anti-cannabis, she's just smart cannabis, is what I think the direction she's leaning on that. So I would move that we appoint.
Hang on a second. We still have to open the public. Were you finished with your comments? Thank you. Any other Supervisor follow-up at this point? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it to the public in the room. Are there any members of the public in the chamber that wish to comment on the consideration of appointment for District One Planning Commissioner? Seeing none in the room, Johanna, are there any online? Hearing none online, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I move that we appoint Monica Rosenthal to the District One Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. We'll go ahead and move on to seven point three, which is consideration of appointment of District Four Planning Commissioner, which is my item. I have proposed asking the board to support the appointment of Miley Field for the Planning Commission. She is a longtime resident of Lake County, involved in the agricultural industry. She did previously serve as the District Five Planning Commissioner for three years, and so I have selected her to bring her forward to proposal. Is there any comment from any of my colleagues on the board regarding this? Okay, and just for transparency, I will say I did receive some public concern that didn't go to the whole board. I reached out to those folks and addressed that yesterday before the meeting. So I'm comfortable moving forward, having done that. Are there any members of the public? I believe there's no other comment from board. Any members of the public in the room that wish to comment on this proposed commissioner? Seeing none, Johanna, are there any online? There's no hands in Zoom, so I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll make the motion for you, if you want.
Supervisor Pyska, thank you for making that motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so just to clarify, that motion is to appoint, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Miley.
Miley Field.
Field as District Four Planning Commissioner.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Guintivano. We had this move in a second by Supervisor Owen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, no opposition, we'll close that item. Thank you. And we still have twenty-four minutes before our ten a.m. five point eight. Let's go ahead and take up five point eight from the consent.
I thought five point eight was pulled.
Five point eight, but it's for further discussion.
Oh, okay.
It was pulled from consent.
Thank you. Me, Ray Turner, Community Development Director. Item five point eight before you today was to request closure of our counter for transition of our digital information into our new electronic permitting system. It's called OpenGov. It's going to be awesome. We are still working on a few systems that need to get up and running before we can do that transfer and go live. So I requested that this item be pulled from consent, so I could let you know that our timeline has been slightly adjusted. At this point, we would prefer, or we would request board approval for a closure of our counter on Friday, February twenty-eighth, with an anticipated go-live date of Monday, March third. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Is there any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
And no need for a specific response, but there's a plan for outreach to letting the community know about that closure, whether on the website or in your, in the hallway right there.
Yes, we will have significant signage letting the public know. And in fact, this, it helps to amend these dates because it will, it will add more days that we can have that notification available.
Agreed.
Is that only for the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were really excited about kind of capitalizing on the three-day weekend because we'd get a day on either side, but we weren't able to finalize a couple, a couple aspects of the system.
Any further comments from Supervisors? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item in the room? Seeing none, Johanna, are there any hands? Nothing in Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board.
We don't need to move on it, right?
I believe we do.
I believe we do.
If we could amend the closing of the counter to February twenty-eighth.
I move to approve the closing of CDD to the public on Friday, the twenty-eighth of February, for the transition to the new OpenGov software systems.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Any suggestions?
Break.
Break. Let's, let's take a.
Twenty-minute break?
We can handle that.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Stephen.
She said five or ten-minute break, and then we'll figure out what to do.
I'm going to go ahead and call a ten-minute break. We will come back at nine forty-nine a.m. Thank you. Back to order after the break at 9:51 AM. And we are going to take up item 5.10, which was pulled earlier from the consent agenda. That's an item to adopt resolution authorizing the Health Services Director to sign grant agreement 24-10, 824, in the amount of $47,010 for the California Department of Public Health's HIV/AIDS Surveillance Program for fiscal year 2025 through 2029. And we have our Health Services. Okay, we can pen that, and I'll move on to item 5.12, which was approval of general services agreement between the County of Lake and EBA Engineering for Civil Engineering Services. That was A and B approved supplemental services agreement number one for Civil Engineering Services for the Emergency Operations Center Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of $20,635 and zero cents, and authorize the chair to sign. We have our Public Services Director, Mr. Ewing, here to discuss this item.
All right. Good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As was, was mentioned, was pulled, the reason for the, the pulling of this agenda item, I appreciate Supervisor Sabatier catching this. The General Services Agreement included two references to the landfill inappropriate. It was essentially a copy and paste error from a, a General Services Agreement for another project. So we do have, I believe, shown up here, there are two sections, in section eight and 16. So the red shows the, literally the red lines, so removing any reference to landfill. So the, the General Services Agreement is the, kind of the umbrella agreement, really terms and conditions for, for future work. The work is, is general civil engineering services, so certainly not limited to the landfill. In fact, not likely to be at the landfill. Most of the work would be elsewhere. So the, the other agreement on there, supplemental services agreement one, is, is for work at the EOC, and that's, there are no changes to the agreement that was on the consent agenda there.
Thank you, Director Ewing. Do we have any comments from board members? Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry, I missed it. It did the Star Trek thing right before I was able to pay attention to what was on there. We're just striking number eight and number 16. Everything else gets renumbered, and that's it?
No, we're not striking those, those lines. We're just striking the, literally the word landfill or words that refer to the landfill.
So basically, consultants shall provide consultation and advice to county during projects for services related to, not landfill construction, or during construction projects for services.
Gotcha.
Just back on the screen with the...
So 16, county shall have the right to assign specific projects to other consultants without affecting the terms of this General Services Agreement, which strikes at the Eastlake Sanitary Landfill, and then a similar strike through on, on section eight.
Easy enough. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the catch.
Any further comments from board members? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public in the room that would wish to comment on this, corrections on this item or this item? Seeing none, Johanna, in Zoom? No hands in Zoom. I'll bring it, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the General Services Agreement between the County of Lake and EBA Engineering for Civil Engineering Services.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may?
Yes.
As part of that motion, it would be as amended. Your board may want to approve that.
Oh, I apologize. As amended, do we need the chair to sign as well?
Let me have just a second.
I do a condition?
Yes, and authorize the chair.
And authorize the chair to sign. Thank you.
So we had a correction on the motion. We still have a second?
Yes, second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Johanna, do we have Health Services back online?
If I may, do number B.
Oh, I'm sorry, number B, yes.
Or letter B, sorry. Move to approve supplemental services agreement number one for Civil Engineering Services for the Emergency Operations Center Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $20,635, and authorize the chair to sign.
Are you second that?
I have a motion and a second. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ewing.
7.5.
What was 7.5? We'll go ahead and take up 7.5 instead of going back to 5.10.
All right, I appreciate that. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. So for the board's consideration, is a, is an agreement related to the, to the Sheriff Administration Center renovation project at the, at the Armory. The, the agreement that, for the board's consideration is construction management with Vanner Construction Management Incorporated. It's an agreement in the amount of $665,753. The scope of, of their work is, essentially encompasses most of construction management services. That, that includes special inspections and, and project commissioning, along with kind of the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month construction management. I, I will highlight the fact, as your board may recall, I came to the board a few weeks ago getting approval for a retired and new tenant coming back to help out with construction management. So Vanner will be essentially augmenting county staff. We have a couple of, we have a capital project manager who, who will be the overall construction manager and, and project manager, as well as staff who's, who will be onsite helping. So overall, the, from a percentage basis, we're at the, the low end of what construction management would, would be for a project of, of this realm. We're in the, in about the 6% range.
Thank you. Any discussion from board members? Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I guess while, while we're here, there's a two-year timeframe. That's the anticipation, that everything will be completed by that point in time?
You're talking about the, the actual construction project?
Well, the, the construction management, it looks like there's a two-year timeline for that amount that we would be spending on construction management. Does that mean that we anticipate the construction to be completed by then as well?
It's, it's anticipated to be less than that, because we're going into commissioning, and, and there's, there's closeout work that has to be done. It gives us some wiggle room, but we're looking at about a 14 to 16-month window for construction.
Love it.
Any further comment from board members? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public in the chamber who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, any hands in Zoom, Johanna? Or is she here for the other item?
Thanks for your participation.
Okay. So I'm going to take that as no hands, no public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Vanner Construction Management, Inc., for construction management services for the Sheriff Administration Facility Project in the amount of $665,753. And authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. And now we can, do we have Health Services confirmed in the room? Yes, so I'm going to go back to our 5.10 item, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the Health Services Director to sign a grant amendment 2410, 824, in the amount of $47,010 for the California Department of Public Health's HIV/AIDS Surveillance Program for fiscal year 2025 and 2029. And I believe we have Kim Tangerman, is it, from Health Services?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Rainey, would you like to speak to this item?
Well, the reason I believe it was pulled is because we had a couple of corrections. We did have a holdover from our previous resolution in that first paragraph. We had $50,015 for the term of the grant, and it should actually reflect the $47,010. And then we corrected the date at the last paragraph to today's date instead of December 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members or comments at this point? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there any members of the public in the room who wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, Johanna, do we have any hands in Zoom? There are no hands in Zoom. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for consideration of a motion.
I'll offer the resolution.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Sabatier has a comment.
Just a brief comment. I know that Director Arton submitted to the board HIV rates based on data from the state. We are below the California rate at this moment in time, but we have such small numbers in our per hundred thousand capita that any increase does make a large increase. But just wanted to say thank you for what has been done through this program already and looking forward to continuing this program as well.
Thank you. And Supervisor Pyska offered the resolution?
As amended.
As amended.
I second that.
No, we don't need it.
Let me see if I can get my order. Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Aye.
And Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye. So that concludes that item. And I believe we are now on to our 10:00 a.m. timed item. Take that up at 10:03. And consideration of presentation of the National Flood Insurance Program from Community Development. We have Director Turner here. Thank you.
Thank you. Muriya Turner, Community Development Director, I'd like to request a continuance of this item, please. I know that it has been continued previously. There are ongoing collaborative discussions between community development and water resources regarding the most efficient distribution of duties in the National Flood Insurance Program, including this presentation. So if it is okay with the board, we'd like to bring it back at a future date. It doesn't need to be time date uncertain.
Okay, before, is that it for now? We'll go ahead and take comments from the board members before we open it to the public, if there are any.
I don't have a problem with bringing it back.
Okay, hearing none, are there any members of the public in the room who wish to comment on this item at this point? Julia, thank you, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Rasmussen. Board, staff, good morning. Julia Carrera, I'm representing the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Committee. We just request that when this actually does get presented, that you include the opportunity for the community to get insurance in Upper Lake. As the continuing problem in Upper Lake with the levy system expands to more agencies and awareness out in the world, insurance companies are now pulling flood insurance, and the county needs to be able to provide flood insurance for the community of Upper Lake. I'm hoping in that presentation, you will include the opportunity for the community members in Upper Lake to get flood insurance through the program. Thank you.
Johanna, do we have any hands in Zoom? There are no hands in Zoom. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just a brief request, any documents to better prepare for upcoming presentations, if that could be made available to both the supervisors and the public?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Are there any further comments? And do we need a motion on this? County Council, just consensus to, go ahead and continue it? I believe we have consensus. Yes, okay. Thank you. That concludes our 10:00 a.m. item. And Mr. Carter? Calendars. We may have time for, let's go ahead and start with calendars, and I'll start with Supervisor Sabatier.
All right. Am I on the right month? Yes. So tomorrow, meeting in Lower Lake, the APC LTA Commission will be meeting, meeting with healthcare professionals tomorrow to discuss what, I know Ben Rickelman is also working on to help provide more healthcare employees, meeting with Bruce Wilson from the North Bay Workforce Alliance, I think I got that name right, to kind of get up to speed before we meet. And then having a conversation with our contractor doing the study over in Lake Pillsbury. So we'll be discussing the new PG&E draft that just came out. On the 13th, I will be spending all day in Sacramento. There's a CSAC board meeting that's occurring. Depending on if that meeting ends in time, there is another NACO first hundred days update as to what's going on federally. And then at the end of the day, be meeting with Supervisor Pyska, Sheriff Bingham, and Code Enforcement Team for the CSAC Innovation Award that we won for the Roadmap Task Force. Friday, meeting with CSAC for the California Caucus, just to kind of get an idea of what's happening Californiewide, and setting up some interesting new plans for PEG that I'm hoping that we can share with you when we come for our April, around that timeframe, annual presentation. Our Food Policy Council will be, no, that's not right, that's the following week. And I'm just gonna stop there. I have some meetings with Paragon, with admin staff, meeting with COC, NACO Arts Council, food policy, more COC stuff all the following week as well. And then on the 27th of February, I'll be leaving to Washington DC, so, and I will not be available for the March 4th meeting, as I will be coming back. I believe the flight is on the 5th, if I remember correctly, but I will be there for the NACO Legislative Conference.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Owen?
Tomorrow, I believe we're meeting with the geothermal, doing a geothermal tour in, to the effluent plants or the...
Pipeline.
Pipeline that supplies the water to the geothermal geysers for reinjection. That'll take a good portion of the day. We'll be visiting all the sites. Tuesday, Thursday, I'm going to be speaking at the judge's breakfast in the morning, and then we have a meeting, fire safe meeting, fire safe council meeting at 10:00. I have constituents, meetings with constituents on the 14th and I believe the 15th. The following week, we're leaving on the 19th through the 21st for a training in Sacramento. I do have the ladies luncheon on the 19th, the Hidden Valley Lake Ladies Luncheon on the 19th at noon, and then leaving that afternoon for Sacramento.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska.
Tomorrow, APC LTA, and which kind of bumps into my NACO ELU, which bumps into my NCO monthly check-in on home hardening. I'm not sure I'm going to make, I also got invited to the Workforce Alliance orientation, but I probably won't make it after the dentist. I have the B.VAC meeting in the evening, Fire Safe Council on Thursday, the Rec Agency meeting is in the afternoon. I was going to miss that to go to the CSAC Awards Dinner, but I'm on the fence given the storm that I may or may not go. And then the 14th, I've got two meetings happening at the same time. Hopefully I can get that straightened out. Pre-mortality and, I did get appointed Chair of Agriculture, Energy, and Natural Resources for CSAC, so that's my kickoff meeting for the year with the vice chairs. Next week, several meetings, the Paragon meeting, Healthcare Education Hub, LAFCO tour, biomass, another biomass meeting on the 20th, and Paul Berry Council meeting. Yeah, so quite a few things next week, and then back on the 25th. Oh, the Risk Reduction Authority on the 24th.
Thank you. Last week, later part of the week, I attended the Clear Lake Hitch Community Outreach Meeting that was jointly put on by the Abemetol Tribe and Lake County Water Resources with this, with also contributions from other tribes and state agencies and community partners. Attended Continuum of Care meeting last week. I also attended the Congressman Thompson Zoom presentation regarding federal budget issues last week. Over the weekend on Saturday night, Supervisor Sabatier and I attended the Canada Light Vigil at Library Park for Vazenti Colosseum. That was well-attended by around 300 people from, I would say from all districts in the county. There was people from many communities, particularly District 5 and 4, where he's lived in both of those. So next week, or this week, I'm sorry, met with some community partners, the Lakeport School District. Tomorrow, I will be at the Area Planning Council, being I'm an alternate member. I'll also be at the B.VAC meeting, which I believe we have a full council now for B.VAC after today's appointment. I've got tomorrow and a few community meetings and an interview with the folks working on the tobacco initiatives in the county, as well as our monthly Mental Health Advisory Board meeting at the Circle of the Native Minds. And I believe that wraps up, well, since we don't have a meeting on the 18th, and there's a holiday, my, most of my week will be leaving for the New Supervisors Institute Second Session with Supervisor Owen over in Sacramento. That concludes my report for this week. Thank you. And I believe that leaves if we have time to do a closed item, 8.1. Okay, we'll go ahead and call our closed session, item 8.1, which is Public Employee Evaluation Title Air Pollution Control Officer. And do we need time to shut down video, about 10 minutes, Sam?
Partial.
Partial? Okay. All right. So we'll be on a short break until we are ready to take that up. Thank you.